Now it's past, I didn't know you guys could do this.
Yeah, no, we moved through that pretty quick.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Santa Barbara School Board for June 8th, 2011. We will begin with the flank salute.
Please rise and salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have translations.
Today.
Do we have translations?
No.
No. Oh, surprise.
Well, we have Sandra in the audience if you'd like to go.
Okay, Sandra, would you please introduce yourself?
Good morning. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Sandra, estoy la intérprete para la reunión de esta mañana. Si alguien necesita de mi ayuda.
I'm sorry, is the microphone on? Okay.
I'm just not close enough. Okay, buenos dias, mi nombre es Sandra Trujillo, soy la intérprete para la reunión de esta mañana. Si alguien necesita de mi ayuda puede venir a hablar conmigo. Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to point out that although, if you look at the days, you will note that Kate Parker is not present with us. She is coming in remotely from England and has complied with all of the Brown Act requirements for notification and accessibility of the site where she is located. So she is with us.
I am with you.
Okay, we are at public comment. We have, I believe, one public comment.
Kate Smith. Is Kate Smith here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we are.
Could you please come to the podium?
Okay, we are going to begin your time, so please come to the podium.
Yes, you can.
Annette Cordero and members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education. Is this on? There is deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption. There is collusion, conspiracy, and cover-up of wrongdoing by taxpayer-paid lawyers, specifically those at Griffith and Thornburg, Craig Price, John Gillespie, the DA, county counsel. They have all worked together. The retaliation against whistleblowers is rampant and severe. Our democracy is in peril. If you've been reading online, you can read about the inverted totalitarianism, about the corporatocracy, the school-to-prison pipeline, which incarcerates the low socioeconomic sector of our youth instead of educating them. And we are in an uprising. There is a pattern in practice of wrongdoing that is maintained by a co-opted oversight board and sustained by the absolute power and abuse of process regarding your hiring practices. Back in 1999, Michael Caston renewed his contract as superintendent, and a three-year extension of that contract was added within three months. Brian Sarvis tried to do that, and members of the public rose to the, "Oh, I want you to videotape Sarvis. They're videotaping me." But what we find is that we have no record of the way the elected politicians and the administrators are responding. There was one time that Joan Esposito got up at the public podium and said there is rampant and severe retaliation against whistleblowers, and Brian Sarvis was videotaped by my videographer saying, "Shh." I can't say the words. I was sent letters, several threatening letters.
Thirty seconds.
They have spent over $50,000 retaliating against me, humiliating me, and now we're going through the farce of electing his replacement. He's not retiring. He will be taking over Bill Sigroni's job as county superintendent. He'll be appointed by a rubber-stamping County Board of Education, and that way he'll be able to run as an incumbent in 2012.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. If you would like to speak to, you have a speaker slip-in for C-3. If you would like to speak to that item now, you may, but you must confine your comments to the items on the closed session agenda.
Okay.
And we will begin your time now.
Except, no, we won't begin our time now, because what you have to do is to announce what C-3 is, because the people watching.
C-3 is the closed session action. And we are starting the time.
Okay. You will be reporting that you've hired a new superintendent. We've been through this before. Michael Caston resigned his superintendency ostensibly to spend more time with his 16-year-old son, and within one month, he was hired by the County Office of Education to the second-in-command, where he worked with Diana Rigby and DA Tom Sneddon to create the truancy program and parent accountability program. There was no mention of the school accountability. It morphed into the school-to-prison pipeline. It's the greatest Holocaust for our nation ever. We, the people, are rising to expose deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption. You're running a RICO, a racketeering-influenced and corrupt organization with our money. Michael Caston was awarded Superintendent of the Year, even though a sitting board member called him a scoundrel and said that he left our superintendency because he was running away from four very potent lawsuits. Bob Noel wanted a search firm, but Debbie Flores said that she wouldn't run for the position, she wouldn't apply for the position if you did that. It's a matter of trust. At closed session, I asked you to tell me how much have you spent for this farce? How many hours have you spent doing superintendency qualifications? What you hired was somebody who could sit on the 23 lawsuits you have against you. I asked you to tell me how much money you had spent on consultancies and search firms to do this farce.
Thirty seconds.
Santa Barbara School District has become infamous. Diana Rigby was the first administrator to be found personally liable for violations of Americans with Disabilities Act. The public paid over $5 million. Do you know that they're cutting back librarians, all the nurses, music, all the arts, but the administrators?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, we have no additional public comment?
Madam President, can you notify the people in the back, there are eight seats at least up front, if they'd like front-row seats?
Yes, if anybody standing back there would like to move up, there are some seats available. Okay.
But I did file to be on the hiring of the superintendent, the action item.
Okay, Ms. Smith, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Well, I, okay, I'll be called later then?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to our item three, the announcement of closed session action. First of all, item B1 was pulled from the agenda, so there is no reportable action on item B1. On item B2 and B3, I am pleased to report that the board has agreed on the selection of our next superintendent, and we have concluded negotiations on the new superintendent's contract. In just a moment, we will share that information with you. I know that's what everybody's here for. The last closed session item, item B4, there was no reportable action. So now, let's go to item.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can you note that there was a roll-call vote?
I'm sorry, yes. I made a note of my, it's even on my notes here, and I didn't say that. For the selection of the, of our next superintendent, we did take a roll-call vote, and it was unanimous. So in item C4, introductions and recognitions, this is the moment that I think everybody's been waiting for. I think that's why we have a packed audience here today. We had a lengthy and very competitive search process to bring Santa Barbara School District the best possible superintendent that we could find, and we feel that we have found that person. So I am very proud to introduce to the public our new superintendent, Dr. David Cash. Dr. Cash, we are thrilled to have you here. We are very happy that you have agreed to join our district, and I know you are here with your wife Heather and your daughter Ella, so we are happy to have them joining our community as well. Thank you very much. And Dr. Cash, if you would like to make a few comments?
I would love to. First of all, I want to really thank the board very much for what appears to be a very complete and exhaustive process in the search, and I want to thank you for your confidence in me to be the next superintendent in Santa Barbara. And I'd like to say to everybody, this is really a homecoming for me. I am thrilled beyond measure to be able to be returning to Santa Barbara. I've been away for seven years, and I learned a lot in those seven years. And one of the things I learned the most was that it's so important to be able to work and live in a community that has the same vision and values regarding education as your own. And I'm convinced that Santa Barbara does, and I'm so, I'm very excited to be back here and be part of the educational team in Santa Barbara. Really look forward to the work that we will do, building on the work that Dr. Sarvis and his team, along with the board, has done for the past seven years, and looking forward to continue that work and do what's best for kids in Santa Barbara. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and again, we are thrilled to have you. Do any other board members want to make any comments?
Well, I'd like to jump in at this point. I can't say how happy I am that we're making this announcement, because Dr. Cash has been on my wish list as a possible superintendent for a long time, and I'm really marveling at how all of this came together. It seems like the stars were aligned, fortune was shining down on us, and here we are. The appointment is all the more meaningful for me because my two sons were at Galita Valley and at Dos Pueblos when Dr. Cash was principal there, and so I know as a parent what a responsible leader he was, how responsive to parent concerns. I know how much the kids really loved you. They did, and I think you set really high expectations for them, and that made them work harder, and they really valued that in the end. So for me, this is also a terrific homecoming. I know our community is going to be the better for you being here, and so thank you for agreeing to be our superintendent.
Thank you.
Mr. Herron?
Yes, I'll echo all those, and I'll just get a couple of things to sort of piggyback on that. A couple of things maybe the principals would like to know is Dr. Cash's dissertation for his doctorate was defined autonomy, how superintendents work with principals to create the defined autonomy at schools necessary for improved student achievement. We heard, Mrs. Lamone and I spent the day in Claremont Monday, and we heard a lot from 13 different members of the education and the city community, and Dr. Cash's belief that teachers and principals should be given the autonomy to do what they do best, is teach and run a school, but with this sort of over-accountability that Dr. Cash will bring to the table. And that's something that I believe in totally regarding principals and their staffs. The other is, just one instance, we spent the day, but one instance, we sat down for lunch at the outdoor 50-year-old restaurant in Claremont, and lo and behold, and I don't think it was set up, a father and son just walked down the street, the son is now in college, took one look at Dr. Cash, and jumped almost into the dining room over the fence to hug and say how he's doing, and wanted to talk to Dr. Cash and ask about Dr. Cash's family. I didn't need to go much further. I mean, just seeing that, and the father, just seeing that reaction from a father and son to you, Dr. Cash, I think sets the tone for me that you have just a wonderful life here. I also want to comment that it came clear that we really hired Heather, and we get, we get Dr. Cash as a bonus. So thank you, Heather. We look forward to a long relationship with you and your family.
Ms. Lamone?
Well, I'm equally excited as my colleagues. I had the opportunity to see how supportive Dr. Cash was at Dos Pueblos High School with the CalStoep program. And as my colleague here, Mr. Herron said, we really had a great visit, and I think one of the things that's most important to note is that Dr. Cash brings both an insider and outsider's perspective to our district, and so I think that that is going to be something of amazing value, because you have the fresh innovative ideas, you've seen the best practices across the state, but you also understand our community. I think that the district is really lucky in having your teaching background, your special ed background, and I am really looking forward to the work that you'll continue to do. And one thing that is really dear and near to my heart is Dr. Cash's commitment to our community in so many ways and to serving all of our students. Dr. Cash has agreed to be as great of a Spanish speaker as his wife Heather, and will, you know, hopefully be learning some Spanish, because that is of importance to him, to be able to work with our, all of our community, including our Spanish-speaking community. So it's been exciting getting to know you more and more through this process, but I also feel that more than anything, our students are going to directly benefit from all that you have to offer this district. So welcome to Santa Barbara again.
So thank you very much. Ms. Parker, would you like to chime in?
Yes, just briefly. I want to echo everything that my colleagues on the board have said. I'm so excited about Dr. Cash coming to the district. One thing I did want to add in is that we really had some top-quality candidates, and it speaks to your credentials, Dr. Cash, that you are our ultimate choice. You really, really are going to be a great hire for us, and I think a great fit for the board, and great for the students and the teachers in our district. So thank you for joining us. I want to give a shout-out to our search firm, HYA, and everything that they've done for us over the past few months, and also to my fellow board members. We've all worked hard on this. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you in this process. And, but really, Ms. Cordero and Mrs. Deacon, thank you so much for going above and beyond. I know you, you too, as well as our district staff, Ms. Kiani, I can see you right now, and Ms. Hall, and everybody else has worked on this. It's been a terrific process, time-consuming, but I'm really so happy with the results.
Thank you very much. I think it has been a full district effort. We have put a lot of effort into this. We did, as we said, an exhaustive search. I believe we found the top candidate, somebody that will come to our district and just really take over the leadership role in a dynamic way and help lead us forward. And speaking of leadership role, Dr. Sarvis has asked if he can also make some comments.
Well, I'm thrilled by this decision. I wasn't involved in the decision, but it was a great one. Dave, welcome home.
Thank you, Brian, very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. In a moment, we will be adjourning and welcoming you a little bit more informally, but we will, at this point, move on with our agenda. But stick around, because we're going to be talking to you.
I'd like to stay on.
Yes, thank you. We can take you off the hot spot for a minute. Okay, so that brings us to item D1. We have one public comment on that. Kate Smith, Ms. Smith, we have recently changed our policy, since it was not noted to you earlier. We are going to let you speak on this item, but we, the policy was recently changed that a speaker may only speak to three items, including closed session items. So for the future, that will be the new policy. Okay, you may begin.
Thank you, Annette Cordero and members of the school board. I know you don't like me. And there was a time when there was a, Craig Price was explaining that you need to change your public comments so that Kate Smith can't get here and speak truths of power. And he said, "She's not making any friends." And I got up here and I said, "I'm not here to make friends. I'm here to make changes." Our children and our children's children, our entire nation and our democracy depend on us working together. I know, Dr. Cash. Dr. Cash, didn't I go down to Los Angeles with you? I went down with Dr. Cash and three other top administrators to Los Angeles 10 years ago, when we were trying to create education reform. There is a model school paradigm in this Santa Barbara school districts. It is child-centered, teacher-directed, parent-involved. There are no administrators in that equation. And I've been here many times at the public podium and said that the millions of dollars represented by you on the dais and by the people in this administration, and the $122 million in Bill Sigroni's fiefdom, it could all be, I don't want to say blown up, it could all disappear, and it wouldn't matter. The school bell would ring, and the children would run into their classroom and interface with their teacher. But I do not think that the schools should be autonomous. I think there should be communication, cooperation, collaboration, and coordination.
Thirty seconds.
In terms of the word autonomous, that is also the way we start the word autocratic, and it is diametrically opposed from democratic education. I don't have the time to give you that definition, but that's what we're going for. Please bring in practical wisdom, compassionate community, and restorative justice, and democratic education. Our entire nation, democracy, and our children's future depends on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, our, that brings us to item D1, the approval of employment agreement for the new superintendent. I'd like to note that copies of the proposed superintendent's contract are being made available in the back of the room. I think, maybe, do you have those right now? Okay, so if anybody would like a copy of that, we are also furnishing the public with a board-authored compensation report, which describes the process and methodology that was followed in reaching the proposed contract that is now before the board for approval. For a more comprehensive version of the compensation report, you can check our district website. It should be posted shortly. Okay, so we will be looking at item D1. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, then is there a motion for approval?
I am happy to make a motion to approve the employment agreement for new superintendent, Dr. David Cash.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Okay. All those in favor, do we need to take a roll-call on this one?
Yes.
Okay, so we will take a roll-call vote on this item.
Ms. Cordero?
Aye.
Ms. Deacon?
Aye.
Ms. Lamone?
Aye.
Mr. Herron?
Aye.
Ms. Parker?
Aye.
Thank you. It is unanimous by zero.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, so that then brings us to our final item, E1, the first reading of a tentative agreement, of the tentative agreement language between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. And Mr. Smith will be presenting this item.
Thank you. We spent the majority of May 26th negotiating with SBTA on actually two items. The first one, related to wages, negotiating furlough days as contingencies in the event that the state's budget continues to deteriorate. I think it's the board knows we're going to budget based on the May revise, but we have not 100% confidence that those numbers actually will be sustained over time. So what you have in front of you is modifications to Section 5, Article 4, wages, and it describes furlough days both for the 11, 12, and potentially the 12, 13, and 13, 14 fiscal years. We developed a sliding scale relative to loss of dollars related to the revenue limit and a corresponding amount of furlough days. I'm not going to get into a great amount of detail here, but depending on the loss of revenue, the SBTA members could take anywhere from three to 10 furlough days, depending on what happens. Also, there's a couple of triggers in this actual agreement. The first trigger being in the event that the state budget is adopted, not predicated on the passage of the temporary tax extensions, but we receive less. That would be a trigger that could invoke the furlough days, depending on the magnitude of the loss. And then the second trigger would be in the event that the state budget is adopted, predicated on the passage of temporary tax extensions, and those taxes actually fail at either November or some other future ballot measure. In both cases, it would trigger a requirement for us to meet and negotiate how those furlough days would be implemented during the balance of the year. The second item deals with class size, specifically with language related to San Marcos High School. It essentially suspends the class-size staffing ratio requirement until such time that the base revenue limit is fully restored, or we become basic A district in the newly-unified school district. I don't think I'll see either of those in my tenure here, given that we're at 19.75% deficit at this point in time. So we're presenting this to you for a first reading. We'll be bringing it back next week, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Okay, are there any questions from the board?
No questions, but just a compliments to both our association and to you, Mr. Smith. This is a great example of teamwork, working together for the betterment of the children.
Thank you, and I would also say it was a collaborative effort, and I'd like to also recognize the team members, which included Kathy Avney, David Ortiz, Jerry Fawcett, Ann Peake. I don't believe Robyn was there that day, or Meg was there that day, and I'm sure I'm leaving somebody out, but just the whole team.
Great, and I'd also like to echo our appreciation for that, both to our district team and also to SBTA for their willingness to negotiate in this area.
Could I just say that I, our district so far has escaped furloughs for our teaching staff, and if things go well, we will escape them completely. But I think it's important for the public to know that districts all around our state that districts all around our state have implemented furloughs across the board for many of their teaching staffs. And so we're unique in the sense that we haven't. Although our management and our administrators have been subject to furloughs in this last year. So I'm really hopeful we don't have to go there. But I am also really appreciative of the teaching staff and their willingness, and all the certificated staff, their willingness to work with us on this. You know, they're helping save the li- not the lives, the livelihood of their fellow teachers. And that's important. I think that they show that solidarity within the ranks as well. So I'd like to thank them for working with this as well.
Oh, Ms. Lamone?
And finally, I mean, echo on the thanks to everybody involved in the negotiation. I definitely think that this is one example of what we needed to do to put our students first. It's not something that's ideal for either side, and I think it's a very tough. But it really is in the best interest of our students. So thank you to all those involved.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Parker?
I want to echo my thanks, but I do have one question for Mr. Smith. If this tentative agreement is approved at our regular meeting next week, how soon can we expect that RIF notices, the layoff notices, will start to be lifted?
I think we would probably start looking at that right after budget adoption at the end of June. Remember, this only pertains to our certificated staff, and we still have a little bit of a ways to go with our classified staff. And we still have outstanding reductions in forced notices out there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This will be back on our agenda next Tuesday. And so with that, I believe we have reached the end of our agenda. I'd like to thank especially, well, really, all of you who are here in the room with us today, as well as Ms. Parker. And I think it's really a testament to how supportive our staff is, that so many of our staff members are here. I know even- This may apply to some of you. I know it applies to Ms. Peake, is here on her day off just to be part of this sort of historic presentation for us on the hiring of our new superintendent. So I appreciate the fact that so many of you are willing to be here to take part in this very important announcement. And we will, I think, have some refreshments in the back? Yes, okay. So, okay, they will be set up shortly, and you're invited to participate with us. So thank you very much. And with that, I think we will adjourn the meeting.
All right.